Voters from across our region are looking to cast their vote to have a say in who will make it onto the general election ballot. Tonight, we're sitting down with candidates from the Benton County Commissioner race. We'll cover a wide range of topics from the economy to growth in our region to goals for the upcoming year. Before you cast your ballot, Northwest Public Broadcasting and the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin County want you to know the candidates. Recorded on the Washington State University Tri-Cities campus, this is Vote 2022. And now, from the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin County, please welcome Ravine Jimenez.
Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum. My name is Ravine Jimenez. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Benton and Franklin Counties. The League is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates. In presenting these forums, it is our goal to provide opportunities for voters to become better informed about the people who are running for public office. The 2022 primary candidate forums have been pre-recorded in person by Northwest Public Broadcasting at the WSU Tri-Cities studio rather than on Zoom. They will also now be available at nwpb.org/vote2022 through our additional partners, the Columbia Basin Badger Club, the cities of Richland and Pasco, and of course, the League's website and Facebook page. Please go to l w v slash B F dot org to see the complete information for accessing any and all of these sites through August 2, 2022. At this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Matt Lovelace, from Moore College of Communication, WSU Pullman. Please welcome, Matt.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters of Benton Franklin Counties. This is their Vote 2022 forum, which will dive into issues for candidates in Benton County, Washington. On behalf of Northwest Public Broadcasting, I'd like to thank the League for continuing our collective mission here of bringing voters more insight into the candidates running to represent them. I'm also thankful that we get to do this in person this election cycle. We're coming to you today from the WSU Tri-Cities campus after a couple of years of virtual forums and debates. Now, we've gone over the rules of this forum with our candidates, and for you out there, here's how this program will go. Two of the three candidates in this race are here in this room. We'll begin with 90-second opening statements from each of them. We'll also have a statement from the third candidate who could not attend, but that leaves room for a lot of questions on a number of topics today. 12 questions total, 90 seconds available for responses for each. We're also planning for some quick closing statements. Now, since we're back in person, the big thing we do need to remember is to limit interruptions. So as moderator, and this is a message to our candidates here, I'm here to keep us on topic and on time, so I do reserve the right to cut off a speaker if time is up or make some fair adjustments throughout the duration of this program. All right, let's meet our candidates for this race. District 2 in Benton County, three in this race, including Michael Alvarez, Bill Jenkins, and Barry Bush. Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Jenkins in the room with me, thank you very much for being here. Mr. Bush could not attend, but he did send in that statement, like I said, we'll get to that in a moment. And speaking of those statements, we'll start with those right here. Opening statements from the two of you. Mr. Alvarez, the 90-second opening statement, time is yours.
All right, thank you. So my name once again is Michael Alvarez, and I'm the mayor of Richland. I currently serve approximately 61,000 Benton County residents, help manage and review $322 million-plus city budget. I'm the only candidate in the race that already does a lot of things that a county commissioner does: finance and budgeting, planning and zoning, emergency services, public roads, public works, and so on. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, a local business owner, currently serve in the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. I'm the only candidate in the race that has the education and extensive finance and business experience needed to help ensure that your taxpayers' money is being used in the best possible way, and wasteful spending does not occur. I have a track record of saving taxpayers thousands of dollars annually. As your next county commissioner, I'll collaborate with the cities within the county to help create more family wage jobs, keep taxes low, strengthen our public safety, and work to complete the mental health program and its facilities. I'm endorsed by Benton County Commissioner Will McKay, Commissioner Sean Small, Benton County Treasurer Ken Spencer, the mayor of Kennewick, mayor pro temps of West Richland, Kennewick, and Richland, professional organizations, trade unions, local businesses, firefighters, and supported by many law enforcement officers. Mostly, I'm supported by thousands of Benton County residents. I've lived in Benton County for 30 years, been married 32 years to my wife Gina. We've raised two children, both in Benton County. I'm asking for your vote come August 2. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarez, thank you very much. And Mr. Jenkins, the 90 seconds for your opening statement. Start now.
Perfect. I want to thank the League of Women Voters to give us this opportunity. First, let me start with my priorities. My priorities are God, family, and community. I served two years in the state legislature, well, actually, two terms, and in that time, I was able to build a whole lot of relationships, and those relationships are going to come in handy here at the local level when we create policy and move forward in trying to get that accomplished. I'm a common sense person. I believe that common sense has been lost, and that's what I work on. But most importantly, I feel that my experience working with four counties was in the state legislature, which was Columbia County, Walla Walla County, Franklin County, and of course, Benton County, is going to give me a leg up on getting our policies accomplished. I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited about the opportunity to do this. I just want to help. I want to help you, the citizens of Benton County, and I'll do that by reaching out to you and being accessible. I'm looking forward to meeting as many people as possible, and again, I thank the opportunity to be here, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. And as I said, Mr. Barry Bush could not be in attendance. He did send a statement in his place, a written statement. Northwest Public Broadcasting's Greg Mills will read that statement now.
I was first elected as a Benton PUD Commissioner in 2012. I continue to serve in that capacity. Our team at the PUD manages a budget of $170 million, as well as a staff of 155 people. I'm a pass board president. My family moved to Kennewick in 1972. My wife Janine has been a teacher in the Richland School District since 1999. My daughter Cassidy is a local small business owner, and my son Brady is serving in the United States Army in Europe. In 1984, I joined the United States Marine Corps. I served as an infantry team leader until 1988. Most of my professional career has been as an elected energy executive, as well as working in the agriculture industry as a sales and transportation manager. I graduated from Central Washington University with a BA in speech communication in 1994. I also graduated from Columbia Basin College with an AA in 1992. Between attending CBC and CWU, I attended night school for one year at the original WSU branch campus in Richland. I worked full-time while attending college. I am the founder of Save Our Horse Heaven Hills, a group created two years ago to stop out of the area multinational corporations from constructing wind turbines in Benton County. Currently, a massive wind farm is in the works. The farm consists of 244 wind turbines that are 671 feet in height, which is slightly taller than the Space Needle. To put that into perspective, the current wind turbines south of Kennewick are about 350 feet tall. The company that is planning on building this wind farm bypassed Benton County Commissioners and the Planning Department. Instead, they went directly to the state's EFSEC Committee for approval. The governor has already hinted that he will approve this project. Currently, the county commission has nobody in an elected capacity or on staff with extensive energy experience. This experience is needed, or we will shortly be overrun with companies that want to destroy our environment, kill our birds, and lower our property values. These companies are interested in building here because our governor has invited them to do so, and because the incentives to build here could be worth over $500 million in federal dollars. To be clear, none of this so-called green energy is slated to stay in our community. We simply do not need the energy. Benton County needs energy when it's coldest and hottest outside. That's exactly when the turbines will not turn. We, as a county, need to encourage our elected leaders to do all they can to stop this massive wind project, including litigation. Simply saying no is not enough. We, as a county, need to all fight this project, or we will be left with a community that none of us will recognize. I would appreciate your vote for county commissioner. When elected, I will continue to fight this project, as well as others that are just over the horizon.
And we thank Mr. Bush for sending in that statement. Now, we do have our two candidates here in the room, and we'll get to the questions. 12 questions, like I said, so a lot of topics to cover over the remainder of this hour. And the first one we'll get to has to do with fireworks. The difference between when we record this and air this, 4th of July will have passed, but as we drive around right now, we see all those fireworks stands out there. And now, the rules and restrictions, not necessarily consistent between the county and the various local cities. Should there be more coordination when it comes to fireworks laws? Mr. Alvarez?
You know, I think there's starting to be more coordination right now. The city of Richland, we have certain restrictions that apply to fireworks within the city of Richland. I believe Kennewick is adopting our fireworks policies that we have within the city. And so, yeah, I think between the cities, I'm all about collaboration, and that's one of the reasons I'm running for county commissioner, is to have more collaboration between county commissioners and city managers, city councils, the mayors along with that, and having that collaboration, having that communication, so we can work together and have more uniform permitting processes and all those things together. I think we do that, we're going to be a lot better off within the county. So the short run, I think the short answer would be yes. We could go ahead and collaborate and make that work easier.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alvarez. And Mr. Jenkins, same question to you, just about fireworks laws and keeping them consistent among all the different municipalities.
Well, it's a timely question, and it's not only fireworks. There's other laws that are out there that are inconsistent from city to city, and we do need to have a little bit more cohesion. That's what I'm working on with counties to county as well, not particularly with the fireworks, but in getting cohesion within our sister counties, if you want to say. As far as fireworks are concerned, it's right in the middle of the hottest time of year for us, and I've seen many fires happen. There was one right below my house a couple of years back that caused real problems. In Prosser, our fireworks, we were shut down because of that as well. And I'm not opposed at all to working with the cities, you know, within Benton County to create policy that is more cohesive.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins. Let's move on to question number two here, as we talk about budgets here. The latest Washington State transportation budget provides $75 million over the next 16 years to Benton Franklin Transit. Now, the only condition to get that is the existing voter approved a 0.6% sales tax to stay in place. Some of the current board members have advocated reducing the sales tax by 0.1% or 0.5%, which is a 50 cents savings on a $500 taxable purchase, and putting such a proposal on the ballot. So what are your thoughts on this issue? Mr. Jenkins, you first.
Yeah, I do have some strong ideas on that. What's going on there with Benton Franklin Transit is very poor ridership, and if one person gets on and makes two transfers, that's three different riderships, and so the numbers are skewed. I really feel like the state's hanging this over our head and saying, well, if you continue that, then we'll give you this money. And to me, that just doesn't sound right, common sense-wise. I would like to see a far less amount of money, tax-wise, going to them and shifting some of that money over to things that are more important. Right now, there's a lot going on with mental health, and there's money needed for mental health. Why not shift some of that tax money so we're not creating a higher tax to accomplish what we're trying to do with mental health? Why not take it from where the monies are? I don't believe that they need that full amount. I would be in favor of lessing it and giving up that siphon from the state.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. Same question to you.
So I know that there's a Benton Franklin Transit Board, and there's community elected officials. I know we have a member on that from the city of Richland, there's city of Kennewick, and there's county commissioners, all within that board. And so to me, you know, I look at it, ridership is important. We need to go ahead and have good ways to commute back and forth within the county, within the city, so that makes sense to me. I know as far as we're talking about mental health, currently, they're looking at, I think it's LifePoint, which owns Trios, which owns KGH, they're looking at doing a short-term inpatient facility, they're looking at building, or not looking at building, looking at purchasing. And so, but I think those funds, to be honest with you, are being used from grants and ARPA funds, those type of things like that. So I'm going to rely on the people that are on that board, that represent the cities in the county, and have them give me the information as a county commissioner, do my own homework, and talk to the citizens. I think it's good to have citizen input before I make any decision on that. I think it's good to do the homework. I'm not a specialist on everything. I'm a finance guy. If it makes sense to do, let's do it, but let's talk to the people that are actually on the board, the commissioners, the city council members, community leaders all on there, have them come back to the county commissioners, get the information. I think it's my responsibility, if I'm elected, to go ahead and do my homework and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. All right, question three goes on to climate issues. You mentioned it being the hot time of the year. We're all feeling it out there, hit triple digits the other day. Due to climate issues, should we start to change to Code 2 drought-tolerant plants or native plants? What are your thoughts on that, Mr. Alvarez?
So to be honest, well, so again, it's going to be not my specialty, so it's something I would have to do, and I've always been someone in elected office, if I don't know, I'm going to say I don't know. You know, I know we are in climate change, and that's a very important topic and very important issue. We have a lot of energy problems right now within the United States and around the world, but when it comes to, I think you said plants and those type of things like that, I have groups and people I've met that are environmentalists, and I've told them when we've met, you know, please don't use acronyms, let me know what your, actually, the verbiage is, at least the first time, so I can look it up. I think it's important to get that information from them and from a lot of different groups that are specialized in that, and to be honest with you, that's how I would probably go ahead and approach it. Once again, I'll be honest with you, I think it'd be a topic to be more educated on, so I can speak more intelligently on, and I've always been open and honest. Give me the information, let me do some homework, talk to the staff that's actually proficient in that, and let's work it out that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jenkins, that same question to you.
Yes, and it's a great question. You know, the climate does change, and it's changed during the course of my life. It used to be called global warming, and then it wasn't global warming anymore, it was climate change. So, yeah, we do have to anticipate climate change, and we have to be versatile enough to do what we need to do in a certain year where we run up against challenges. As far as the question was concerned, do we need to make the changes? We don't need to make wholesale changes that are always going to be there. We need to make them when we need them. I don't like regulations and restrictions, and that's what that's doing, is creating both. We need to avoid that, but we need to be cognizant of the climate and what the repercussions of that particular year's climate is. I do know that it's a, forget the pun, but it's a hot issue, and it has been, and it'll continue to be, because it's political. Anytime you run against something political, it's going to sometimes get out of hand, but we do have to be cognizant in what we do, and we have to make sure that our citizens are protected.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. All right, question number four, and we heard a little bit about this in Mr. Bush's statement, talking about windmills, and it appears that Scout Energy may be successful in bringing additional windmills to Benton County. If they're installed, what do you think the pros and cons of those would be, and how do you mitigate any negative effects that might happen from them?
There's a couple of things here, and I'll talk fast so I can get them in. First of all, if they are installed, there's a real problem with what do you do when you have to get rid of them? Where do you put them? Those are huge, huge windmills. So there are problems, and you know, the way things are going, like Mr. Bush was saying, was the governor will probably sign it. I can guarantee that he'll sign it after working in the legislature. I know how we act and that type of thing, but this is what we need to do on the windmills. It's not the current problem with the windmills. We have to, that we've got to work at, and we have to get the right resolution. But in the future, there is something in statute in the late 90s in the state that allowed Scout Energy to go directly to the governor or to the committee and bypass us, the county, the people who are closest to it. We didn't have any say until after it was well underway, and so we need to fix that. And fortunately, last year, there was a legislator that got that bill in. The bill did not go. He was able to put it as an amendment to another bill, and then that went, but then it got to the governor's desk, and he vetoed it. So right now, there's no change to that statute. That statute has to be changed, and I'm going to be working on that with my contacts to get that done.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. All right, that same question goes to you when it comes to those windmills.
Could you repeat that question?
Yeah, sure, and I'll just repeat it. This is from League of Women Voters, so I'll just say it the same way. It appears that Scout Energy may be successful in bringing additional windmills to Benton County. If they're installed, what are the pros and cons, and what can be done to mitigate any negative effects that may occur as a result?
I think some of the cons, potentially having very, very large, keep in mind, these are very large, visible windmills that are going to be seen within the tri-cities. It could go ahead and reduce the price of value of some of the homes within the site of those, so I think those issues are there. We're not getting any benefit from those windmills, from what I understand, here in Benton County. You know, I know that the county commissioners are looking at different avenues to get more information, to maybe stop that project right now, so there's going to be litigation. Unfortunately, you know, I know Governor Inslee came down here and wanted to speak and met with community leaders, and I represent about 61,000 Benton County residents. I know the mayor of Kennewick, I believe the same thing. He also represents about 80,000. We were invited to that meeting, and I think we're going to go ahead and do something like that. We need to have that dialogue from Olympia down here to Benton County and to all the citizens within the county. Two-thirds of the citizens that live in the county live within the cities of the county, and we should have had that information and that dialogue to have a good discussion on what's happening up there on the hill up there. So to me, I think it's a complex issue. I'm not for the windmills personally. I think it's not going to look nice, it's not going to do well for us here in Benton County, but I'd like to have some more dialogue and maybe work and see how that comes out. It's going to be interesting to see what happens.
I want to ask you about negotiations. Where do you stand on open negotiations with Benton County employees?
You know, right now, well, right now, I believe the deputies have not been under contract for about a year and a half, and to me, that's important that we work through that process. It holds our sheriff kind of handcuffed, because if we don't have the ability to go ahead and negotiate, for example, with the deputies and get them up to be fairly compensated with other local enforcement officers here in the tri-cities, it's going to be hard for him to go ahead and retain or recruit. So public safety is a big thing for me, so on that side of it. Open negotiations, you know, there's pros and cons to it. I think it's important for us to go ahead and keep our trades and those people employed. We have a lot of special trades here, electricians, carpenters, et cetera, but at this point in time, it's an interesting concept. I have feelings both ways on it, and I'm going to go ahead and, I wouldn't want that to go ahead and get more information from the people that represent, or that I represent, to be honest with you.
All right, thank you, sir. And Mr. Jenkins, same question. Where do you stand on open negotiation?
You know, and that is a great question. When I was on the school board, we had negotiations with the Washington Education Association, WA, and quite frankly, I feel that the WA pretty much runs the education system in this state, and they were closed. As a school board president, I couldn't attend, and I wanted to be there. I think we need to, and it's a big part of my campaign, is accountability and transparency. How can you be accountable and transparent when you're not allowing the people to be involved? So I'm actually for that. It's going to cause, there's going to have to be some things that are put into place for it to work and not become a shouting match and that type of thing, but I think the public should be involved with that. I'm not opposed to that at all. I think it's a good idea.
All right, thank you very much. Well, moving on to question number six. According to the Tri-City Herald, the former Kennewick General Hospital location for the Benton Franklin Recovery Center, that is being planned, has fallen through. So the question, Mr. Jenkins, you first. Do you support having the center even if it's in a different location, and why or why not?
Yeah, of course I do. I thought it was just a fantastic idea to convert the Kennewick Hospital to that, and then, of course, we ran into the problems where they were going to only be allowed to stay there with mental conditions for three days, and they're going to be fixed. Of course, we know that's not the case, and so does the current commission, so we do have to move in another direction, of course, and then we're buying that building, and there has to be a plan put into place, and I know that they're working on that, and I would love to be helping work on that plan, on what to do with that hospital, once the other plan is put into place to make this a reality for the mentally ill. It's the mentally ill that are causing the biggest problem as far as public safety, in my opinion, and we need to do something about that. We need to help them. They're not bad people. We need to get them help to where they'll become citizens, you know, and active citizens. I've been involved with going to many of the centers, especially when I was a legislator, to see how they work and some of the good stories that come afterwards, and we need more good stories.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. And Mr. Alvarez, same question to you. I just asked the second part of it. Do you support having this Benton Franklin Recovery Center even if it's in a different location?
Absolutely. I think it's important to go ahead. We have a lot of issues when it comes to the homeless and co-occurrence where there's homeless and maybe with drug addiction as well. You know, one-to-day, one-to-three-day inpatient mental health or drug treatment is not enough. I know that the county's also looking at more of a long-term adult inpatient center, so not only do they have a place where they have this program going on, but we have transitional housing, we have youth programs for the mental health and drug addiction, and we have to have the housing for it as well. So those are a lot of programs I know the county commissioners are working on, where you have more of a long-term inpatient facility, and we also have the housing where we can house them while they're going through that process, other than just going to one-to-three-day, they're back on the street. It doesn't help anybody, it's just a revolving door. So absolutely, I look at, the mental health is an important issue, it's part of the thing with the public safety sales tax, so I think that's a passion of mine. I think we can get that done. That's the programs and the facilities. If I'm elected as a county commissioner, it's going to be one of my number-one priorities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the League of Women Voters must have known you both would have gone down that path, because this is a good segue to this question. Do you believe financing should be available to support mental health personnel accompanying law enforcement on calls or even going in first? An interesting question, and why or why not would you support that?
Yeah, I think it is important. I think, you know, right now, I know that we had, in the city of Richland, we have our police officers there, and they do have the ability to have mental health specialists with them and respond to those type of calls, and if it can go and de-escalate it, I think it's hugely important. It's been successful, and so, yes, I do believe the funding should be there. That's part of our public safety. It keeps everybody safe, not just police, but also firefighters that are going in there and needing to help somebody that needs help as well. So, yeah, so we can have mental health professionals in there to go ahead and de-escalate the situation, and then able to find them the treatment that they need 100%, 100%. Thank you.
I think the question would be, maybe I'll just follow up on that, is how do we get to that financial support?
To get to that financial support, I actually think, you know, obviously, being a finance person, that's one of the things, I know the county treasurer had asked me to go ahead and run for this office due to my finance background and to the success I've had within the city of Richland, and I think that's something we have to look at the budget for. Also, with the public safety sales tax, when that comes up for renewal, that's a potential where we could use some of those funds to fund that program and that personnel as well.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. And Mr. Jenkins, I'll ask you both parts of that question as well. Having an accompanying mental health professional with law enforcement, would you support that, and how would you be able to fund something with that?
Yeah, well, I would definitely support that. I would not support just that mental health person showing up without the officer. The officer would need to be there to de-escalate anything that could come up, because there could be something that come up. And obviously, the mental health professional is going to know more than your average law enforcement officer. I'm sure a lot of law enforcement officers are really up to speed on that, but mental health is a professional's job. As far as financing it, I would, like I said before, I would be in strong favor of tax shifts to be able to help in that type of thing. We have a real problem, like I said before again, with that, and we need to support our law enforcement officers as much as possible, and that's one way of doing it financially. We, when I spoke to our past state treasurer who endorsed me, Dwayne Davison, we discussed... Dwayne Davison, he, we, we discussed some, some ways that we can possibly finance this type of thing. And, and it seems like tax shifts is a good way of doing it. We don't want to bring every time we need money, a tax to the, to, to the citizens to pay for it. We've got, we've got plenty of money available through grants and through tax shifts and that type of thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins. All right. Moving on now, we're already on question number eight, if you can believe it. And the question is a pretty simple one. What is your view of the county versus the cities when it comes to land use? Mr. Jenkins?
Well, you know, I have a real issue with counties and, and cities land use, particularly a lot of this district two, that's, that's what we're running for is unincorporated. The unincorporated people just don't have the kind of voice that they should. And, and we need to work, work in one way, getting planning commissioners that are from unincorporated areas as well as from cities. If you look at our planning commissioners now, we're not there. And so we need people from an unincorporated area to be listened to also. And there has to be cohesion, obviously, between the county and, and, and the cities for the particular land use because that's, that's one of our biggest purviews as, as a county commissioner is land use. And we're, we have a duty to our citizens to help all of them, not in, whether they're in the city, whether they're in the county or in, you know, of course, unincorporated areas. It's, we have to, we have to get everybody together and we have to do it in the right way, in a planned, right way.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you. Mr. Alvarez, same question to you. Your thoughts on, on those, maybe when it gets contentious between the county and the cities?
You know, once again, it doesn't have to be contentious. I think that if we work together as a county commissioner, you know, I, first of all, I have a very years of extensive knowledge when it comes to planning and zoning. I do that here in the city of Richland. I talk to the other mayors of Kennewick, West Richland, Pasco, et cetera. And so it's important to me that, you know, once again, we collaborate between the cities and the county on our planning and zoning. So, and I think we have a lot of commonality on that, whether it's a commercial or residential. I agree. One of the jobs as a county commissioner is, and we're talking about being, representing the constituents that, that hire us into this job or vote for us, is to go out there and get to know them and see what their needs are and what they want. What, what do they need? What do these cities need in Prosser, in Benton City, in West Richland, Patterson, Plymouth? What do they need as far as infrastructure? What kind of zoning are they looking at? What kind of, why is going to help economic development as well when it comes to, when it comes to the zoning and planning to bring more jobs into those communities, more infrastructure in those communities? So I think we have to collaborate with the cities and we can do a lot of different great things if we work together. But I think we have to get the input from the citizens, from the entire county to go ahead and do that. And that would be my job to go out there and, and learn what the citizens need within, within the county.
All right, Mr. Alvarez, thank you very much. All right, moving on to question number nine. This has to do with the public safety sales tax set to expire in 2024. So the question, Mr. Alvarez, is are you supportive of renewing that 0.3% tax?
You know, 100%. It's going to affect the cities within the county and it's going to affect in the entire county. We're going, there's 100-plus people, employees within the cities and the county that are going to be affected. Several deputies, if that, if that goes away, I think there's 20-some to 30-some deputies if, if that public sales, self, public safety sales tax goes away, that will have to be potentially laid off. There are police officers in Richland and police officers in Kennewick and et cetera that are also part of that public safety sales tax. That's how we're paying them in a time where it's right now hard to recruit and retain law enforcement officers as well as prosecutors. We need to have that public safety sales tax in place. It also goes ahead and, and does our drug task force that we have here within the tri-cities and it, and it also promotes a lot of different programs that keep kids off the street and are just great programs, community programs that, that as a whole helps us keep our community safe. So absolutely, that's one of my top priorities to do is to make sure to promote that public safety sales tax. We're going to lose too much if we don't. There's a lot of positives into it. And last but not least, I know we have a corner, but we don't have a medical examiner. And so we have to always contract that, that out from either Seattle or Spokane, et cetera. So my thing to do is also maybe to go ahead and get a medical examiner here and work with the other counties to maybe have one here locally. So we don't have to keep on losing contracts and we can have one here to do those type of things when we need to have that done for, for medical exam, for autopsies and stuff like that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Jenkins, with that sales tax set to expire in a couple of years, do you support keeping it?
Well, it is set to, to expire 0.3% sales tax is, is quite a bit. It got off to a rocky start when we had all that surplus that accumulated in, in the sales tax and basically to a lot of people, it seemed like a lottery on how to give that money away. I, I think, I think they did a good job in finding how to give it away, but why did you need to give it away in the first place? There, there, there needs to be a plan set up and identify exactly where that tax is going. I, I have a real, a real issue with the, the sheriff. We've had discussions and he can't pay his staff, I mean, his, his officers the kind of money that he needs to pay them to be able to keep them. He loses them to the cities because, because he's not able to offer them enough pay. That has to be reconciled and it should be reconciled within the public safety tax. To me, common sense, it, it, that's, that's, that's the bucket it comes from. And, and so we need to identify where that money's going and, and, and not, not create this big surplus and have, have another lottery to spend it. So there we go.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next question and this one just sort of has to do with the role of a commissioner in both Benton and Franklin counties. And currently, the commissioners in those two counties are the only board members on the health district. So question is, should the board be expanded to include others and why or why not? Mr. Jenkins?
Well, and of course, we had, had our fill of the health district and they had their limelight during COVID. So a lot of this got, got, got pushed out and, and so there are a lot of opinions on that. I really think, think that, 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 that board should, should be, be brought out a little bit as far as, again, accountability and transparency to where, where, where there may be, be some more voices heard and, and voices I can't name on who those, those participants could be, but, but I'm not opposed to that at all.
All right. And then would you, could you repeat the question one more time? Oh, yeah, sure, of course. Current Benton and Franklin County Commissioners are the only board members right now on the health district. Should that board be expanded to include others? And what do you think about that and why or why not?
You know, I think as a county commissioner, we're, they're not specialists in everything. So I think the, I think it's important for us to go ahead and, you know, we have boards and commissions all through the, the county and the cities within the county. So we're going to be held accountable for that as county commissioners, but I have no problem expanding it. But we're going to go ahead and have to really get some feedback on who should be on that board, what their qualifications and experience are and to make sure they're actually there for the right reasons to represent the majority of citizens of Richland and, or excuse me, Richland, Kennewick and, and West Richland, Benton City, Prosser, Plymouth, Patterson, et cetera. Make sure we got the right voices in there and they're doing it for the right reason. That would be my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. All right, moving on to question number 11. And this has to do with Hanford cleanup. What should the long-range plans be for the local economy when Hanford cleanup is finished or maybe as funding is reduced? Mr. Alvarez?
So first of all, I don't think Hanford's going to go anywhere, anywhere soon. You know, I, I meet, I was in Phoenix, I'll be going to DC. Brian Vance is the head of DEWE here locally. We have a lot of different meetings that we've done together and I think it's going to be there for years to come, unfortunately, especially with the kickoff, what's going on there now, with, with how they're going to go ahead and do the cleanup there. So I think that's going to be the long-term for, for a while, next 30, 40, 50 years, to be quite honest with you. But I think we need to gear up. We have, I know that here we have 1,300 prime industrial acres here that we have that can set up for other industries. And I think in Benton County, we can go ahead and promote, this is a really quality place to live with a lot of opportunity here. So I think if we do it right, we can bring other companies in, other corporations in. We have a lot of open land to do so and that would create other jobs, good family wage paying jobs as well. So I think we have to look at the short-term, long-term and midterm to go ahead and get those, get those things off there. But unfortunately, Hanford's going to be here for a while and as that goes, I think our economy will continue to grow. People are moving in here at a very fast pace. And once again, we have a lot of open space that is prime commercial, industrial property to go ahead and, and get, get those companies in here so to keep us going in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Jenkins, I'll just ask you the question again. What should that long-range plan be for the local economy when Hanford cleanup is finished or as the funding for it is reduced?
And there does have to be a long-range plan, an economic plan, because, I mean, think of it, if, if Hanford went away, what would it do to the tri-cities? And we all know what it would do. That's where our, a whole lot of good paying jobs are and that, that drives our economy from the top down. Hanford will be here for quite a while. We have to make sure that our legislators and, and the powers-to-be fight for us to, to make it, to, to make it be here. Because so far, so far, we, we do have some advocates and it's worked out well at the federal level. But as soon as we get, get some in there that perhaps aren't quite, quite as effective at doing that, then it could happen. So we do have to plan for it not being here. And, and like Mr. Alvarez said, we, we do have a fantastic place to live and, and we do need to let more people know about our place and, and our economy. And we, we, we're, we're getting, getting some very large companies that are providing a lot of good paying jobs. Why not continue doing that? And I know that we are, but we can't let up. We, we, we've got to keep, keep the pedal to the metal and, and get ourselves set up for a situation like that.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. All right, moving on to another question. This one has to do with homelessness. What can the county do in conjunction with the cities to help with the homelessness situation in the area? Mr. Jenkins, you first.
Well, well, and, and there are some, some, some very effective shelters around town that are doing a good job. I, I like, I, I like in Pasco what, what they've been able to accomplish and, and getting, getting the people into a shelter and it's faith-based shelter and, and what they're able to do, they, they make them, they, they actually go up in ranks as time goes on and it really helps their sobriety. They, they, they're able to, to go out and find a job. That's one of the biggest things is, is to get them employed. But before you can even do that, you've got to get them up off drugs and alcohol. So we have to work together with our mental health in order to make, make these facilities operate more efficiently and to be able to make the whole situation, you know, go away. We'll never, I should take that back. We'll never have, have that situation go away because there's some homeless people that just don't want to be helped. But, but for those that do, there's got to be a place for them to get that help. And we, and at the county level, that's one of our primary responsibilities is have that place for those people who do want to be helped.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. Same question when it comes to homelessness, most, more specifically when it comes to county and city collaboration on the issue.
So I think that's a very, that's a good question. I think it's very important. And I know that's, like I said, one of the reasons why I'm running for county commissioner is to collaborate with the cities within the county. I think we could do a lot of, a lot of good work on that. It's going to take money. It's going to take a lot of fact-finding. It's going to take grants. It's going to take a lot of work with all of the, all the, all the directors and all the administrators to make that be along with, with a lot of people within the county that, that are passionate about that. So I think we can go ahead and get that done. I know that Mr. Jenkins talked about faith-based places where, for temporary housing, those type of things. I know another one we just talked about. And there's some laws that restrict on where, if they, if, where they can go and if, and if we want them in a park, if they're in a park and we want to have them go to maybe somewhere else to get housing and if they don't want to go, there's all these different issues and a lot of legalities with it. But I know one of the things that within the cities and the county, there's, there's vouchers for hotel rooms. I don't know if a lot of people know that, but they can give them a voucher for short-term housing within a lot of the hotels and motels around the tri-cities as well. But I think the funding is going to be there. Once again, it's very important that we go ahead and get those mental health and drug addiction, drug abuse programs together, along with the facilities to go ahead and do that. And that just can't be county commissioners in the county. The county's budgets, if they were on an annual budget, they're going to buy annual, but they're on annual budget. For example, they're about $160 million annually. The budget for the city of Richland is about 322 million. Kennewick's even more. So I think we're going to have collaboration. We put that together, we can do a really good job.
All right, Mr. Alvarez, thank you very much. And I'm being told we have a little bit of extra time here. You didn't use up all of your 90 seconds, which of course you're not required to, but it does give us a chance to answer questions on a couple of more topics. And there's one that, you know, the league often asks about when we do these forums. It has to do with growth, but also balancing that growth with protecting our green spaces, our open spaces or this time of year, many brown spaces as well. How do you manage growth and protecting those spaces, Mr. Alvarez?
That's a good question. Being an outdoors person myself, like I said, I, I like to go out in the mountains and fly fishing and those type of things. I started out in city government as a commissioner for Regional Parks and Recs Commission with sports and, and open space and those things. So I think we have to balance it out to where, you know, obviously, we're going to have to bring jobs in and our economy is growing. We have to make sure that we're, we're having the right places and the right size of homes and right size of lots for the, the number of people that are coming in here. We're also going to have to look at a commercial property to make sure that we are doing it right the first time as well as industrial. So we, I think it's important that we have the balance there. And keep in mind, I, I can say here in, in tri-cities, we're very lucky. We have a Columbia River. We have waterfront. We have shorefront. We have tons of parks. And so it's important that we maintain all those. We have Badger Mountain. There's 100,000 plus that go hike Badger Mountain. So we have to make sure that we have the right people in place that are elected, listen to the community, listen to the people in our Parks and Recs departments and make sure that we're, we're creating that quality of life that everybody, that's why people are wanting to move here. So we create that quality of life and continue to do that. But we have to have smart people in there that know zoning and planning and that balance. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Jenkins, same question to you. Balancing growth and protecting the space in which that growth happens?
There's nothing wrong with that. The county has a whole lot of parks already that, that, that we're trying to maintain. And then when we grow, there's a need for more parks because the people, the, the population, the new population is going to need to go recreate. So we've got to have, have, have growth that's smart enough to be able to accommodate that. And, and, and that's part of being a county commissioner because working with the cities to, to accomplish that. We always have to be cognizant of property rights. That's, that to me is the biggest concern. I was ranking member on our housing committee in the state. And, and during that time, I saw a lot of bad examples on how, how, how bad growth can go. But, but if we recognize property rights and, and we, we do it in a smart way, we can balance that. And that's something that, that I'll continue to do, especially with my knowledge and, and the, the, the different people who I've met through my association as a state legislator. I think that'll be, that'll make it more effective.
All right, Mr. Jenkins, thank you very much. And I'll have one more question before we get to closing statements. And this one, I'll keep this very broad because I don't know if there was an inspirational moment in choosing to run for this position, but what is that big issue for you, if you had to pick one, I suppose, that is facing Benton County? And how would you solve it?
Well, to me, the, the biggest issue is, is public safety. And that's been mentioned a few times today. And, and we just have to, we, we certainly have to continue on. We have to work, work with the different sheriffs around the region, not just Sheriff[1706.71] We have to work, work with the different sheriffs around the region, not just Sheriff Crosstree. We need to, to, to work, work with, with the Walla Walla Sheriff. And, and also with Jim Raymond in, in Franklin County. Mark Reiter is the Walla Walla Sheriff. And then also reach, reach out to Yakima, so, so that, that we can work regionally and, and create an environment that, that we're all on board. And, and I think that'll make it better for everybody. Public safety, the state legislature, as we all know, the last couple of years really did a horrible job with, with literally putting handcuffs on the officers and not allowing them to do their job. We have to get that rectified, and we have to do that through the legislature, of course, to change, change those regulations and restrictions. And we'll have to continue doing that. We'll, we'll have to, 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 to pay our officers enough money, and we discussed that before, to, to, to be able to be safe.
All right, Mr. Jenkin, thank you very much. And Mr. Alvarez, what do you think? Most pressing issue, and how would you handle it here in the county?
So I look at it as two-thirds of the citizens that live in the county live, live within the cities of the county. And so, I really thought about that. The biggest issue I have, and it's broad range, I don't have, I'm not a one-trick pony per se. I look at it as if I'm elected as a county commissioner, I definitely want to go ahead and collaborate within the, with the cities within the county, for sure. And so, we're getting good representation for all the taxpayers that are paying taxes, because a lot of, a lot of, a lot of citizens don't realize, they think, oh, they live in Kennewick, or they live in Prosser, but, you know, in, 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 in Richland, that they're not Benton County residents. They're actually, yes, they're, they, they live in the city, but they're actually citizens of a county. And so, we want to make sure that I collaborate with those, those cities within the county so we can build infrastructure. What do they need to go ahead and be successful? Is it, is it money for buildings? Is it money for public safety? You know, I know we talked about public safety, but that's not only just police and, police and, but it's also fire, response times, reducing response times, such as things for cardiac arrest. There's all those different things. How do we go ahead and fix the mental health issue, homeless issue? That is just not going to be three county commissioners doing all that work. They're going to need the collaboration within the cities to go ahead and get that job done. So my number one goal would be to collaborate on, on the finance side of it, public safety, mental health, all those issues that I think are important to the citizens that live within the county. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. All right, this is the time where we open it up for some closing statements. I know we finished a little bit broadly there, but we have 90 seconds for closing statements. And Mr. Alvarez, you get to go first.
Well, did I start first last time, too?
We've alternated again.
All right. Once again, my name is Michael Alvarez, and I'm the mayor of the city of Richland. I've been told by other elected officials, my extensive finance and business experience has brought value-added to many of the boards and commissions I share with other elected officials in the tri-cities and have helped them make better decisions on important issues. Once again, I'm proudly endorsed by the majority of Benton County Commissioners, our county treasurer, community leaders, professional organizations, trade unions, firefighters, supported by many law enforcement officers. And but most importantly, I'm supported by thousands of Benton County residents. Why? Because they think I'm the right person to represent their members and the residents who call Benton County home. My name is Michael Alvarez. I want this job. I'm asking you for your vote. And if I got your vote, I'm asking you to ask your friends, family, and coworkers to vote for me as, as well on August 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Jenkin, your 90 seconds for a closing statement.
Yeah, my closing statement is, is pretty easy. I, I want to help people, and this is a perfect way of helping my people that I live around and with. And, and I like, like to experience the feel-good of helping. One quick example is, is somebody who, who called my office when I was a legislator and had disability issues and could not get resolution.